Everyone, welcome. Oh, this is exciting. This is our first joint conceptual workshop. Cool. All right, second joint conceptual workshop. First one where I am chair. I will call this meeting to order. Thank you to the city council members who have joined us. The mayor and Vice Mayor Bill Chaklet and Councilwoman Madeline Scales-Harris. Sean and I, we had to be here, so. And I will deter.
Hey Jane.
Oh, I forgot about you. Sorry Kurt.
Okay.
This is not gonna be your last meeting.
No way. Last meeting. All right, so we do have a quorum today and we have some workshop items to review. First up, we have Swanson Developments, SEC Inc., 6331 Franklin Road Annexation and Zoning. Start with, I don't know who are, who's from staff. Matthew, hello.
Good afternoon to all of you. It's a large group today. So, our first item, as you mentioned, is for the annexation and zoning of 6331 Franklin Road. And I'm gonna go ahead and pull it up on GIS here, so you can see where we're at. So Veterans Parkway is here and we are about a third of a mile to the west of Veterans Parkway. And I'll show the city limits to kind of give you an idea of where this is in relation to the existing city limits. So as you can see, from this point to the property, which is at the southwest corner of Franklin Road and Kingwood Lane, is about a third of a mile. So the request today is for you to consider a potential proposal from Mr. Matt Taylor on behalf of Swanson Development for the annexation and zoning of this property. And so, just to give you a little bit of background about where this is situated in relation to the future land use map and the service infill line. So I'm gonna turn off the city limits layer. And turn on the future land use map. So you can see it's the last parcel on the south side of Franklin Road that is within our service infill boundary. And it is designated on the future land use map as SR, which is suburban residential, which would be primarily single-family detached residential lots with a maximum density of four dwelling units per acre. What Mr. Taylor and Swanson are proposing is to annex this property and to, and to zone it for, and so we, this isn't anything that we have received a formal annexation petition or rezoning application. We have just received a joint conceptual workshop application for this to, for you to provide initial feedback. And so at this meeting, there would be no vote. It's simply to give your initial feedback to the applicant, so that they know whether or not they want to expend the funds to move forward with the official petitions and the official plans, the official requests in the future. So, the property is about a third of a mile outside the city limits. It's within our service infill boundary. It's within our urban growth boundary. But we would, in order to annex it, we would have to reach out by annexing the right-of-way of Franklin Road about a third of a mile in order to, to annex it. The future land use map, as I mentioned, is suburban residential and they want to do a combination of commercial along the highway, transitioning to single-family attached to the south of the commercial and the single-family detached to the south of the single-family attached product. So with that being said, I'd invite Mr. Matt Taylor to give you a brief presentation. And as you can see on the agenda, we have timeframes listed, so that we can stay on, on track and get everybody out at a reasonable hour. And so we've designated five minutes for an introduction by staff and five minutes for an introduction by the applicant, and then 10 minutes for questions and answers after that.
Do I get to steal your extra minute?
Absolutely not.
No minute for you.
So Matt Taylor.
Going back to the, to the chair, so.
Did you hear that? I'm the boss, Matt.
Matt Taylor of SEC. Got a couple of members of the Swanson family here with me as well today. So as Mr. Blomley said, you know, this is the last piece inside the service infill line. They've owned this property for a number of years. We looked at this, felt like it was a, a good location. We have proposed something that's a little different than the future land use map, because Swanson has started to see Highway 96, that commercial market mature. I mean, if you look at what's happened at Kingdom Ridge, Kingdom Crest, Victory Station, you know, they've owned those and had those zoned as commercial for, you know, some of that probably two decades. And it's really in the past few years, that area's really started to mature. And so they, they see this as kind of that next, next market for the commercial, especially with the Dell Web that's coming to our west there. And then there's also Saddlewood between us and Dell Web. Saddlewood, I think, is about 70 attached townhomes. It's a county development. And then the Dell Web, I think, is approaching about 1,500 homes. So we could see this being very neighborhood service, probably some medical type uses that we would see coming out of the Dell Web. And then transitioning it back into, just your traditional transition, back into a small pocket of attached and then back to detached. We do know that we will not get some of these homes on the south side of the property. CUD has some elevation limitations for serviceability in the area. Don't know exactly what that is yet. We, we've not presented them with a formal will serve request. Wouldn't do that until after, didn't want to do that until after this meeting. We did have a preliminary conversation with MWRD about capacity for the sewer. I won't speak for them, but we, we felt positive there. And so we made an initial ask of Owen, which would be property owners on the north side of the property. They seem to be willing to grant an easement. We have not secured that easement. That would come much later in the process, but did see a path for us to extend that sewer. And that would be privately extended and dedicated back to the city. We would see this zoning, any of the residential, we would see that being presented as a PRD more than likely. And then the commercial, we would probably request a bulk zone there, would be our anticipation. That's how several of the other projects have been done, but we could do a planned development there if it was the council's wish. Outside of that, I don't think I have anything else real formal. That's high level, what we've anticipated.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. That was three minutes. That was pretty good. Questions, discussion from Planning Commission? Council? All the above? Mayor?
You have no questions, then we vote who?
No. Oh, no, no, there's no vote. We're just discussing. We're just discussing.
Okay, if no questions, no, I mean.
Hey, so in relation, Matt, if you, if you scroll, Matthew, if you scroll back, that's Royal Glen across the street, right?
Yes.
Then our park property is... The question that came up several years ago when the city declined to annex and run sewer to the Dell Web subdivision, there's no sewer out there. So do we know that we can get sewer out there okay?
I know that they would be responsible for extending sewer to the property. Mr. Gore, do you?
Sewer stops at Veterans Parkway, right?
I thought Matt said that they were... Did he not mention?
It would require, I would assume it would require a pump station, or you can get it by gravity?
I think they're doing it.
Okay.
Yes. We've ran some preliminary profiles. It come, it would come out of Bills of Veterans, which is kind of forms an upside-down L at the intersection of Veterans and 96. And we can get it there via gravity. And this site falls from the south toward the north, so it, it falls perfect back to feed into that with a gravity feed.
What, what easements would you need to get, Matt? I'm sorry.
We would need easements from Mr. Owen. He has the large property that you see there on the screen and the kind of little rectangle directly at the intersection. And I think there's two small pieces between his and Bills of Veterans. I don't know, I don't remember if my client has talked to them, the Roland, or not. I do know he had approached Owen. And it got a, did not get a, get out of my house answer, so.
That was just my question, because currently there's no sewer.
Correct.
Out there right now.
Where was the 144, the acres of the park, that park property? Where is that? Right there? Okay.
And the Dell Web that I mentioned is immediately south of that park property that Matthew just clicked on as well.
Give us some idea, Matt, as how many units we're talking about, what's it, right?
I think this one had about nine, between 90 and 100. And I know that number, well, and then I think the townhomes. So I think this had about 150. I know that number's gonna go down, so I think probably around 125 is probably where we'll end up. I've gotta figure out exactly what that, what that magic elevation is a CUD can serve, and that will start to dictate how many.
How many acres is that?
The entire property is...
We've got, if you go back up.
97.7.
Yeah, about 99 acres of the whole thing, actually about 100. And we were assuming some right-of, right-of-way dedication of about an acre. And so, and then we had, commercial-wise, we had about 30 acres in commercial. So about 70 acres of residential. And so if we wind up, wind up with about 125, it's a little bit less than two per acre.
So I, so I think, as we discuss this, a couple of the questions are, is, is, is there any, what are the, the feelings of the Planning Commission and City Council with respect to, I wanna say reaching out and grabbing that property, but annexing the right-of-way and annexing the, the 100 acres owned by Swanson? And also, the, the deviation from the future land use map, which shows it all as suburban residential? And so I think those are some of the things that, that are important to get feedback on this afternoon.
I'm putting my layer back up on my screen. I'm trying to see the future land use map. There we go.
And I can, I can get that up, so that everybody can see that.
So while we're doing that, hey Matt, what type of product are you guys talking about putting out there?
And while you're, and while you're answering that, my other question would be, it seems like the transition from commercial to attached is just super quick. Is there any room to just pick one, one residential product? That's my follow-up question to that.
So we've not started picking out elevations. You know, with the PRD that obviously gives both the Planning Commission and City Council a lot of oversight and control there. So we would obviously be open to, you know, suggestions, you know, things that you like or things that you don't like, so we don't repeat those. As far as, as far as the transition there, you know, normally we would have a, a small transition. I think the users on these backruns, Ms. Everwater, Council Lady Everwater, I think those are gonna be much less intense. I think those are gonna be more office in nature, given that they're off of Franklin Road by quite a distance. And we'll definitely have landscape buffers and fences and things like that through there as well.
More so though, Matt, like, commercial, single-family detached and the single-family attached, like, I guess it's just a lot going on in the not huge, in the scheme of things area.
Yeah, about, about 100 acres total. And so if we could locate our detention between those two, that'd be ideal. But, you know, the area that I think that, I mean, we could look at that, with that general flow from the north to the, or from the south to the north. We could look at maybe moving some of the single-family attached over toward the, the road there, and then putting some detention between there. We just felt like, you know, maybe having the detention as a buffer between the neighbors to the east. But if you prefer it the other way, we could certainly look at that.
Neighbors to the west?
To the east.
Can I look at the...
Residential on the east.
Right, so.
The one that's on the screen.
The neighbors to the west or to the left, plan left here, they're attached townhomes in the county. I think they've started moving dirt, but they've not started going vertical there.
Where's that, Matt?
It's, I don't think this, I don't think I control that. It's the property directly to the left of us there, Mr. Blomley, if you can click on that one.
Attached townhomes in the county.
See where they've started to?
So attached.
Cut in some.
Attached townhomes in the county.
Yes, sir.
Have you ever heard that?
That's right there on the west or the east?
That, so that one that you see is, is that side. Ours is directly to the right of that, which is the old horse barn that's there. The name, the, the name to the west is Saddlewood.
It's doing the single-family attached?
Yes, in the county on a step system.
Wow.
Matthew, I think the thing that maybe Planning Commission and the council to think about, you've got that property across the street, you've got the Owen property, I think that's 150 or 60 acres total. And maybe looking at this at an overall, in totality, what's maybe gonna happen not only on this 100 acres, but across the street? Think you've got the property that the Camino people own on the corner, and then Harney, I think, if I remember the Harney properties, or someone's building a townhome development on that, that property that loops back in across the street behind the Vet Clinic and Kroger, there's that piece of property that we did several years ago, that I think that may already be under construction, that that's multi-family, or not multi-family, but townhome as well. But when this property comes, and if the Owen property comes, and then you've got the county townhome, and then the next step is the city 140 acres with what we do, it would be good to get an overall look at, hey, this is what we, we anticipate's gonna be coming there. Because if sewers run to this property, the Owen property at some point is gonna, is just gonna start. That's why we didn't do Dell Web five or six years ago, and that's why we haven't been able to do anything on the city park property as of yet, because the pro, the sewer was gonna have to come from, I think, the north through Shores Road to be able to get, to get sewer to the park property. So that would be the overall thing that I think the Planning Commission would want to think about with, you're probably opening up 250, 300 acres, as you start having that discussion, that sewer starts getting run further down 96.
And, and we had, and I put the future land use map back up there. We had identified the Owen property as suburban residential as well.
When we go for bills and extension like this, and all that commercial as well, do they build just to the capacity of their development, or do we get, can we require a larger capacity, in other words, to, to consider all of these other developments?
With respect to sewer?
Right.
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Gore or Ms. Smith on that.
Yeah, we have a participation policy. If we want it deeper and a larger diameter, then we actually pay for that, that increase, the difference, so that we can serve additional properties outside of the, the current request. And I'm just talking with Valerie. If we, if you've got townhomes to the west of this, and then Dell Web to the west of that, the only real bigger parcel I'd see that the city-owned Highway 96 property, it's gonna have to be pumped. And we have a 10-inch line right now, and I, that's what I was asking Valerie, could we handle the Owen property to the north? Of course, we don't know that density either, but if it's of similar density, when I just looked at, if you've got 125 units on 98 acres, that's not very dense. I know it doesn't maybe, it, it, the suburban residential gives you, did you say up to four?
Four units per acre.
So, they're, they're below that. And if the Owen property is of similar density, then a tenant should be, a tenant should be fine, and we shouldn't have to participate in increasing the size or the depth, because there's nothing to the west of it.
Thank you, Darren. Okay, we look forward to discussing this more. I guess if anyone on council or commission has more questions or thoughts on this project, you can get with SEC, who is representing the applicant. We will move on to item B, Swanson Development, SEC Inc., discussion about Battleground Place Townhomes rezoning. Mr. Blomley, are you introducing this as well?
I am, I am. And then after this one, Mr. Newman will take over.
Okay.
I'm gonna navigate to the Battleground Place subdivision. Mr. Taylor is here for this one, also representing Swanson Development. So the Battleground Place, single-family residential subdivision is a planned development. You can see it's this planned development here, RT Johnson Drive, O'Green Cove, single-family residential lots, smaller lots, a more compact, single-family residential development, was approved about 20, 25 years ago, and probably built out by between 2005, 2010, sometime around there. There is a large lot within that development that is also zoned PRD, just for single-family residential homes. I'm assuming, and Mr. Taylor may be able to, to correct me if I'm wrong, this was probably the, the home that was on the original development tract. And that's the reason why it's a little bit larger lot, because of the way it was situated in relation to the development plan. Obviously, the property is in the city limits, it's within the service infill boundary, so no, no need to discuss that. They are looking to do a small townhome development on that property, which would require an amendment to the PRD zoning. Obviously, the PRD zoning would not permit single-family residential attached units. And it's a relatively small piece of property, so they are proposing 10 units, so it'd be a small development. And I'll pull up the future land use map. So you can see, consistent with the, with the fact that it's in a single-family residential detached subdivision, it is coded on the future land use map as suburban residential. The townhome development would be more of an AUR, auto-urban residential type of development. But to kind of, to kind of go with that, as I mentioned, the lots in the Battleground Place subdivision are already really smaller than, than what we would normally anticipate with a suburban residential, the suburban residential land use character. So it's almost a little bit of an auto-urban residential development as it is. So that's a little bit of background. And, oh, and as you can see from a location standpoint, it does back directly up to the commercial uses that are located along West Northfield Boulevard, such as the Ford Dealership and the, the self-storage development there across from Georgetown Park. So Mr. Matt Taylor would like to give you a brief presentation, and hopefully I have gotten us back to the schedule here. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Can you pull up your, the concept plan, maybe? And Mr. Blomley's correct, this is the original property owner that the original development was purchased from. He's come back and would like to sell this, so re-approached my client Swanson, who developed the original project here. They had some interest, and so they actually held a, a neighborhood meeting themselves, I think it was last Friday or the Friday before, and had, I, I was not there, but I think it was received fairly well. I think their concerns were mainly about traffic, which is, you know, the low traffic, the low numbers here would be a low traffic count. And then we go to the next.
Mr. Taylor, just to clarify, that was not a city facilitated neighborhood meeting, that was a developer facilitated?
Just my, just my client meeting with them. So they, this is the product they'd like to, the town, the townhomes they'd like to build here. We do feel like it's a good fit, as Mr. Blomley said. These lots are pretty small, was developed, I think the plan was in the, maybe 98 or 2000. And then we've got the commercial to the west and to the south there. So I felt like this would be a good kind of infill location for this larger lot. I'll be happy to answer any questions. My clients are here as well, if you got any questions for them as well.
I think my concern, I, I've sold a couple of houses in that neighborhood, and those roads are really tight, and there's a lot of people parking in the street. And it's really hard to drive around that neighborhood.
How are you gonna handle the trash?
It would be privately picked up. We would have, we would probably use carts, would be the preferred use, just because it's a low number, but it would be private.
We've got four more minutes.
I just don't know if it fits really well, with everything there being just standard single-family. I don't know. I see the thought process behind the transition to the commercial on the backside, but I mean...
I tend to agree.
Matt, how many units are you proposing? It's 10, 10s on that concept plan. And I don't, and I don't think that we would have any more than that. That allows for some outdoor area, formal open space. They each one have two-car garages, and then at least two cars parking outside.
How many acres is it? Is it just one acre, I mean, the whole property?
About an acre and a half.
Okay.
So it would need a sewer allocate, it would need a sewer allocation variance?
I think with the PRD.
With the PRD.
Homes, it allows up to seven, right? And so I think we're 6.9.
Okay.
I try to watch and learn.
Anything else? If that's something else, thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right. I mean, we are, we are ahead of schedule. Love to see it. We'll move on to item C, service infill boundary along Halls Hill Pike. Mr. Newman, would you do us the honors, please?
Yes, thank you Chair. Avery Water and members of council and Planning Commission, really appreciate you council being here today for this. And so with the next item that's gonna come right after this, I wanted to go into a little bit of a, of a high-level discussion of what that service infill boundary is. We talk about it a lot, but I kinda wanna go into, like I said, high-level of what that is and why we have it. So if you remember, 2017, the Murfreesboro Comprehensive Plan was approved. Part of that gives direction for land use and development within the city. And so a few years later, the city decided that that really needed an update. So in January of 2020, there was a kickoff meeting to start that update. There were weekly staff meetings that took place over the ensuing years, stakeholder meetings that took place. There was a lot of back and forth, a lot of thought that went into that, meeting with the different departments within the city to come up with that update. So May 23, council approved the update to the city's comprehensive plan, specifically Chapter 4 of the land use character, future land use, and then adding in the service infill boundary. If you can see the, the map up here, the yellow is... If you can see the, the map up here, the yellow is the city limits, and then that, I think it's a purplish or maybe auburn hashed line around that is that service infill boundary line. And so, what that represents is, in, in all those meetings that took place with, with all of the city, uh, development services, all of the rolling stock, sewer, water, school, police, fire, and, and all departments, that represents their long-term plan of what they can serve. And so, things that are inside this, we, we refer to as inside the service infill line, those are things that our departments have planned to serve within their long-term plans. Things outside of that boundary are what we call the future study area. And so the future study area does not have a future land use designation. Um, it has a, a character generally of, of, um, farmland, agriculture, or, um, more suburban estate characters that we typically see. So, you know, I think one of the, it's, it's good to look at what the guiding principles were. So there was a guiding principle, number two, in, in coming up with this area, and it was to enhance, or growth management, to enhance Murfreesboro's strong sense of community with sustainable growth management policies that balance infill development areas with greenfield development while stimulating economic development opportunities. And so, that's really what this is, you know, these areas you see that are inside the, the infill boundary but not yellow, you know, that's that infill area that would, that council wanted to see infilled with development of some sort. So, that doesn't necessarily mean that the land in the future study area, um, you know, can't be pulled in, but there was something set up inside the, the, um, amendment to the, um, study that says that if you want to move the service infill boundary line, that there would be a small area study conducted that doesn't encompass just whatever an annexation request would be, but there would be an area surrounding that that would be studied, and then we would go back through a similar process, not as long, but going back and asking all of those, um, internal departments, you know, does this fit inside your long-term plan? Can it fit inside your long-term plan? What does that look like to adjust your long-term plan to fit this? And so, it wouldn't be taking just one piece, you know, one request of property, it would really be looking at the property around that to study that entire area to move that service infill boundary line. And, and so, again, you know, that line is saying, we, the city anticipates that we can serve everything in this line over the next, uh, ten years. And that's, and that's really what it is, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a way that we can manage growth, that all departments have had a say in and have a plan to serve, uh, over time. And so with that, I'll take any questions that you may have. And just to point out too, that I, I don't think that we have, um, we have not, and, once this line has been established, we have not annexed outside of this line.
We did MMC on ninety-six. Murfreesboro Medical Clinic on Highway ninety-six was just outside the, uh, service infill line, and it was annexed.
Thank you.
So how, how did Jimmy Davis's property out there on the east side hit into the city limits when it's kind of an island on the south side of Halls Hill Pike? And, yeah, that one up there.
It's right here?
Yeah, and if we got that one on the, so why, why could we not look at some of these bigger parcels on the south side coming back towards Rutherford?
So, so that, that parcel was annexed and zoned in the late nineteen nineties? And, um, I, I don't know all the history behind that. Um, it has not, it has not been developed since then, but it, it was, um, you know, it was.
It's got sewage run right across it, I guess going to the school, so I guess that may have been part of the deal to run the sewage across it, was it got? Full disclosure, I represent that property, so it's just, I, how did it get zoned if we're not gonna look at the rest of it?
Wasn't that, that was not in the nineties, 'cause I, I remember when that came through, 'cause I, I think that used to be Luanne's Ellen, Ellen, Ellen K. Construction and?
Probably.
It, it was, um, two thousand one.
Okay.
Just after the last. Wasn't too far off.
I hate to say I remember that.
A long time ago.
So we're looking at this specifically?
No.
This one?
Here's the, I may be looking at this the wrong way. Specifically, when you have this service infill boundary, and I'm not speaking about this property, but like if you scroll down, we're, we're providing services out, Twin Oaks Drive, 'cause that's where Habitat has got their subdivision.
The other, that way or the other way?
Yeah, right there. Opportunity Lane.
Oh, yeah.
And then the lane, and then I think they're getting ready to bring their next section, or already have, bringing their next section through, right?
Yeah, it's, that's right here.
Yep. You go out, up Twin Oaks, we also have got subdivisions that we've got along Twin Oaks that have come in behind Garrison Cove. I, I guess the question, again, the planning commission, the council, I mean, sewer was run all the way down Halls Hill Pike. And that Halls Hill Pike was made a three-lane road, curb and gutter and sidewalks, all the way past Daniel McKee School. The thought has been to stop at Flat Rock Road. That was the, the thought, but, I mean, either we need to say we don't really care about the sewer that was run all the way out there, and the road that was built, and the sidewalks were built, and we're not interested in it, or have the discussion about what would be appropriate.
Yeah, that's, I, I agree. I mean, we ran all the road, we ran all the sewer and curb and gutter, we should take advantage of it. And I mean, and those properties right there, right to the east of Rutherford, I mean, you could throw a football and hit some of those from the city limits, but right there on Rutherford Boulevard.
And I believe, of course I wasn't here then, but I believe that the county built the road, and there, there may have been some grant dollars that were associated with, with how that sewer and road got there.
I think that was a partnership with the city and the county, wasn't it?
I think so.
I think it was, I don't think it was just the county, I think we, we, we paid for that as well. It was, it was a joint, you know, project. And when you look at that, like, look at Murfreesboro Medical Clinic and the decision, the commission the council made on ninety-six. Sometimes the service, that service infill boundary doesn't match up compared to maybe what the use is gonna be, 'cause I, I would argue that even though the service infill boundary didn't show an appropriate use for a medical clinic, the usage and the benefit to the community in that area was much greater than the line that was drawn on the map. Because now, I don't know if Murfreesboro Medical Clinic going out there, I think Ascension is looking at going out there as well, so. Maybe it's a, that everyone looks at.
Any other comments on the service infill line, or particularly Halls Hill Pike? Did, did we just kinda move right into D, or we kinda combined?
I'll, I'll move into D.
Wanting to have D separate, okay. Was there anything else specifically on the service infill boundary along Halls Hill Pike? Any other discussion from council or commission? Okay, all right. We can move along to number, number, letter D, annexation and zoning along Halls Hill Pike for Bryson Cove Development. Mr. Newman, thank you.
Thank you again, Chair Avery Water. So, in the area that, um, we just had on the screen there at Halls Hill Pike. So the development here is looking to build seventy-eight units, portion of those townhomes, and then a portion of those detached single-family homes. It's approximately seventeen point five acres, uh, so that would be about four point four seven units per acre. This is, as we said, outside the service infill boundary line, so there is no, uh, future land use designation with this. This is in the, uh, future, uh, study area, um, so going through the, um, small area study would be required to, to bring this in and, and move that service infill line. Staff preliminarily met with police, fire, schools, water resources, to inform them of this potential, um, annexation. There were, there were some discussion back and forth, generally just about the amount of, uh, potential officers, um, that would be added for the entire small study area, and then the potential for classroom size increases. Um, and I think the need for sewer monitoring in this area. Um, staff also inquired of the county engineer for this property, who brought up some drainage concerns that they currently have on the property, um, and that they're in the process of securing a drain easement across the property. I think it's generally a fairly flat piece of property, fairly rocky, and on the two thousand ten flood pictures that we have, there was, there was quite a bit on there. I know in, good engineering can always help with that, um, but I think if, in the county, from what I understand from the county, um, it was really that rate that the water leaves this property and, and making sure that we, um, take a look at that. So, I think Mr. Taylor is here representing the applicant on this property too, and he has a short presentation that he would like to make.
Yeah, can you go to the layout that we had in there? Yes. So, uh, we, we understand it's outside the infill line. We think it's very akin to what we saw in MMC where you're servicing down the road and already providing services along this road. Um, we think that, uh, this development is actually, kinda changes, uh, the standard or the expectation along Halls Hill Pike. If you look on the north side where we've had development, uh, it's a lot of attached, um, at the intersection of Rutherford and Halls Hill. I think those are, I think those are duplexes if I remember right. Uh, then you come down, uh, there is a townhouse development that's very dense. I think it was around sixteen units to the acre, and then you go across the street, directly across the street from this property, and you've got a, uh, an apartment complex, and then some commercial, uh, beyond that. Uh, what we've proposed is about a fifty-fifty mix here. Uh, Harpeth Valley Homes, which is the, uh, owner here, they, uh, they've built in a couple of neighborhoods inside of Murfreesboro, they're based out of, uh, the Franklin area, they built a high-quality house. Uh, these are for sale, which I think also changes some dynamics that we see along Halls Hill Pike through here. And, uh, we've, uh, our layout respects those drainage concerns. Um, you know, I was here in two thousand ten, I saw some of those same things. Um, that's why we have such a large open space along Halls Hill Pike, so we leave openings, uh, for that water that comes from the south to get to the box culvert that, uh, was constructed with, uh, Halls Hill Pike improvements there. And so we're very familiar with that. Uh, we've left some existing sinkholes in their present condition. We put those in open space on the east side of the property there. Um, and then we have, um, very purposefully not stubbed streets to the south so that we don't open, uh, some of those properties up for annexation, uh, trying to limit, uh, the footprint to, you know, essentially what touches Halls Hill Pike through here. Uh, I, it includes some examples of, uh, some of the homes, um, that might be built here, um, throughout. It's a mix. The attached would be more of like an alley, uh, load product, so these would need to face out toward Halls Hill, or they would face internally along some open space, uh, amenity areas. Uh, we've had a couple of those, uh, there you go, there's some examples. So very attractive, uh, forward-facing. And much, much lower density than what we've got across the street and a couple of other projects there as well.
Can you talk about the flooding of the property again?
Yeah, it's, I, I think Ben describes it, it, there is not a formal drainage pattern through here, it's, it's very flat, and so, and then it's got some sinkholes that would hold, hold some water, and so, like a lot of our projects, you know, whenever we come in here and make it an engineered solution, uh, we see that improved a lot. And so, uh, you know, the properties on the north side of Halls Hill, you know, they've constructed some, uh, large drainage ditches and swells that moved, that start to move this water from the, uh, south to the north and back to the east, uh, in a much more efficient manner. So I think tho, those weren't our projects, but those certainly look like they helped solve some issues there. And so, you know, I, I think it's an opportunity to help, um, with the drainage problems that we see there. Uh, the easement that's mentioned, you know, my, I've instructed my client not to execute that easement, it cuts through the middle of this property, and we're gonna perform the exact same thing, except for we're gonna make it work with a development pattern, and then the county is not responsible for that cost. It will be, it'll be burdened by my, my client. Um, and so, doesn't make any sense for them to move forward with that project, uh, if we, if we have a project. It doesn't make any sense for the county to move forward with that project.
And in full disclosure, the, the photo that I put up is the May two thousand ten flood, so that's not, that's not the way it sits right now.
Yeah.
You, you wanna say it? I think Halls Hills, Halls Hill Pike is a great opportunity for affordable housing. The land is there, the sewer's there. People need a place to live that they can afford.
I mean, I know there's, there is a, some commercial going down Halls Hill, and I know, Matt, you mentioned something about trying to stay off of Halls Hill a little bit due to the stormwater, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, if you, if you go back to the concept, if you can. Yeah, I mean, you can see, we've probably got, you know, sixty or seventy feet, um, between the townhomes and Halls Hill, and we'll wind up tightening up, we'll wind up pulling lot one off, um, as we fine-tune that design. It, it needs to be a channel, i- it's an overflow through there, so. And we'll probably wind up with some concrete swells. It, it is so flat, we need to, we need to provide that water with a better channel, better pilot channel to get it through the site.
So you're talking about doing an open ditch right there through?
I think some of that will, uh, more likely that will be open ditch, um, for a portion of it. Um, we're not gonna run the open ditch straight up to the, to the homes, um, you know, they need some outdoor space. Uh, we'll likely also end up with landscaping along Halls Hill Pike. This is one that we would intend to bring in as a PRD as well, so, um, the architectural commitments, landscaping, things like that would, uh, you would have a lot of say-so in at, at that time as well. So a lot of detail would go into that.
And I'm, I'm looking at Valerie. Um, I know we've got capacity right now, but there are concerns later as, as other properties may want to get sewer along Halls Hill, that there could be capacity limitations. But for that, but, but we've got, there's capacity for this proposed, proposal. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Next time, we're gonna get Valerie a seat up here at the, at the table.
Yeah. Any other comments from planning commission or city council?
Let me ask a question, cuz, um, at one time, when we had developments like this, we were concerned about multiple entrances and exits. We're not anymore?
No, we, we are still concerned. And, and thi- this is a very high-level concept plan that he submitted. And we haven't really, um, scrutinized it very heavily. I think, I think what he's wanting to do is show you, um, a general concept of what he wants to do. If there are no strong objections to what he's wanting to do, then he'll really get into the nitty-gritty of, of designing it. And at that point, we would, that's one of the, that's one of the topics that we would discuss with him. Um, because that is, um, how, how many units, Mr. Taylor?
Seventy-four, seventy-eight.
Yeah, that's seventy, seventy-four, seventy-eight units with only one way in and one way out. That's something that we would need to discuss with the fire department to see, um, that, you know, whether or not, at the very least, they would want another emergency access point to, uh, to serve that property. But we, we would look harder at that.
Just, just checking, we, that was still on the table?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Matthew.
I look forward to being scrutinized heavily.
That's, that's what we live for, Matt.
With that, are there any other questions or comments? If not, this is the last item on our joint conceptual workshop agenda. Anything else staff needs to discuss?
I, I did just wanna mention that what we've talked internally about for our next joint conceptual workshop is moving this to before the evening planning commission meeting, skipping over November and looking at the evening of December the third and having supper during that joint conceptual workshop and then leading into our evening planning commission meeting. We'll, we'll, we'll fine-tune the details if that's, um, if that's, uh, if that's acceptable, but that's just what we've been discussing internally.
I think for planning commission, we're, we're regardless, whether it's the day meeting or the night meeting. My concern with, and that I raised to, um, to Mr. Newman was, you know, we got, I say lucky. We were efficient today and got lucky on the one o'clock agenda. But I sure would hate for, you know, potential applicants and engineering team to show up at two o'clock and we're still running our regular meeting for another hour.
Yes.
I, I, I think maybe if this meeting were before our planning commission meeting, it would definitely cause us to stay on track and on time.
And tha, and that was one of the reasons why we were looking at, at moving it to the, to before the evening meeting. And so also that we could make the, most of everyone's time by, by, by feeding folks dinner before that meeting.
We like when Carolyn orders dinner.
I, I do too.
Yeah.
If I may briefly?
Sure.
There was a question before the meeting that may bear addressing, which is, um, for future applicants that might be listening to this, um, this is obviously not an open forum that we're doing here. We have items that are on the agenda. So anyone that wishes to have an, a, an item placed on the agenda should reach out to the planning department. They'll help usher you through the process rather than, you know, trying to come to the meeting. Cuz, uh, meetings like this, because there are no action items, there is no public forum, or, or public comment period, I should say.
Correct, okay.
Um, so just for any future applicants, they should reach out to the planning department to, um, discuss their plans and see if this, uh, future joint sessions like this are, uh, a good opportunity for those developments to be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
And, and as this is a work in progress, we're always looking to improve the format, whatever we can do. And so, um, you know, after the meeting, um, in between now and the next meeting, we'd love to hear feedback from the planning commission and council members on, on how we can improve this process.
Yeah.
Matt, you'd like to give feedback?
Really appreciate everyone trying this out. Hopefully it's beneficial.
Good turnout from council, even Kurt Wade. Kurt, I know you're here, I appreciate that one. All right, everyone, thank you, we stand adjourned.